Can anyone hear me? I usually have a big mouth, but just in case you can't. Good evening, everyone. This is Elizabeth Township Land Easing Committee. It is Thursday, August 25th, 2022. And everyone stands at the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call Kat Poehl.
Here.
Tara Kite.
Here.
Dave Masius.
Here.
Abel Bjork.
Here.
Paul Tramatica.
Here.
Engineers Contra.
Here.
Leader Inspector Chris Alves.
Here.
And Council Manager Brett.
All right. Next is, um, can we get the minutes? Do we get the minutes? Okay, did everyone get the minutes? Okay, did everyone have opportunity to look at the minutes? Does anybody have a minute? I know, okay. I need a motion, and if everyone's okay with the minutes, can we have a motion to approve? Tara, I need a second. Abel, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, yes, we've been approved. Okay, now, we're going to address the citizens at this time to the commission. First one's Patty Hoffman.
Patty Hoffman, Broadway, Duncan Station Road. The compressor station that is on the agenda tonight is something that is a big deal. It's not something that you push through lightly. It's something that you don't talk about at one meeting and have it go away. It's something that goes on for a long time. It works 24 hours a day, and it affects people. There is real, live people that it affects. This isn't something that we can say, oh, this is just another of the little things that Olympus has to do. Oh, they need this, so we should give it to them. We are not in an industrial area. This is not who Elizabeth Township is. This is not what the people that talked about the comprehensive plan wanted. And this is not even light industrial. This is heavy industrial. Why are we even, number one, considering it? Number two, like I said, this should be something that should be spread out because I know there's at least 400 pages of documents. So you better have a lot of questions on 400 pages of documents than not say because you went to see a compressor station somewhere that that's what it is. You need to have more information. You need to make sure that this is something that's safe for the township. And it isn't something that says, sir, the township, so how are you going to justify that? This is something you need to talk about slowly in multiple meetings and find out a lot more. Thank you.
Okay, next is Russell Verbani.
Hello, my name is Russell Verbani. I live at 325 High Street, Elizabeth, PA. First item is the tax amendment for the oil gas drilling ordinance should be rejected sensitive with essentially banned drilling in the township for no reason. I support the conditional use application by Olympus Energy for the Hyperion Midstreet LLC Champion compressor station. When the Marcellus wells were first developed, the state set a minimum setback of 500 feet for drilling from occupied buildings. While this setback was in effect, thousands of wells were drilled and no members of the public were injured. Our current setbacks are well beyond this limit, so I have no safety concerns with our current ordinance. I've included two sets of articles in the folders I gave to you. The first was a review of 20 health studies conducted by the Pennsylvania State Health Department and the Colorado State Health Department. The review concluded that for most studies, the evidence was insufficient. That's in the last page of the first standout. And for others, the results were mixed. Some studies said there was an effect, other studies said there was no effect. Thus, there is no strong evidence of health effects as has been claimed. I expect that the state health departments continue to review studies as they are published and will act if health impacts are discovered. The second article is an air quality study for a school in Colorado that was 1,300 feet from a drilling site, closer than the order and ordinance requirements for distances to schools. The Colorado State Health Department looked at 25 air pollutants and found no health risks at the school. Again, this shows that there's no need to change the gas drilling ordinance. The Hyperion compressor station meets the requirements for the gas drilling ordinance and should have little impact on the closest dwellings. It will also be located within an existing industrial zone. The station will greatly extend the life of existing wells, significantly delaying the need for additional drilling. This benefits both the IM owners and those impacted by drilling. The gas drilling has brought significant benefits to the township, including $54,000 in impact fees, royalties, 159,000 budgeted from the township. The school district also gets royalties and the paving of fallen timber road by Olympus. The proposed tax amendment to the gas and drilling ordinance would effectively ban drilling in the township and should be rejected. The Hyperion Compressors compressor station will maximize the benefit of existing wells to Elizabeth Township, and I support approval of the conditional use application. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. That concludes the, um, our scene on the eight citizens. Next, what we're going to do is we're going to do the subdivision. Anyone here, whether it's party owner or anyone that's representing?
Yes.
Come up front. Give your name and who you are.
Hey, yes, I'm Derek Morgan with Urban Terrain, just on behalf of our clients, Eva and Sean Brennan. You have their subdivision law consolidation in front of you. They live at 611 West Doom Road in Elizabeth. And all they're doing is trying to eliminate the lot line that is currently between their two parcels that they own and consolidated into one lot. No site development or new buildings will be going up. It is just simply an elimination of the lot line to consolidate.
The engineer, do you have any remarks?
Yes, I do. There appears to be a creek that comes and it seems like that's just.
Was that just a mountain?
Okay. And it seems to touch the property, and I believe that it might also be in the flood zone. So you should show the creek and show the flood zone from the flood map.
Okay, yes, we did receive the comments as well today.
Okay. There's just one of the owner's adoption and dedication note that doesn't conform to any of the properties. You probably have seen that. One of the things I noticed, the building lines aren't shown, maybe helpful if you should look in more detail. And then there were two type lows in the zoning information chart. The maximum impervious surface coverage is 35%. Can you show us 25 so we can fix that? And the front yard is 35, about 30 is shown on the chart, which will show that and we should those lines.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns? Does the court enforcement have any decisions on that?
Only that we have not yet received back comments from ACB County. So if we were to approve it, perhaps we could do so based on those conditions.
Anyone from the commission have any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, a motion to approve as long as it's been changed.
Yeah, contingent upon the engineer, correction with the engineer's comments as well as the county's comments.
Make a motion to approve.
Abel, I need a second. Tara, on favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Representatives for Olympus, would you like to come?
Hello, all. Blaine, this is again on behalf of Hyperion Midstreet LLC, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Olympus Energy LLC. We're here for planning this consideration of both the conditional use and land development applications that have been filed. The property is located at 2340 Douglas Run Road, northeast of the intersection of Roundhill Road. The property was formerly owned by John and Mario Nicola Mini. When the application was filed, there was a sales agreement in place, which we concluded in the back. Since then, Olympus has acquired that property. It's now a big deal in terms of Olympus. The property is located in the M1 zoning district. They have more industrial district. Compressor stations are authorized under the township zoning ordinance as a conditional use in that zoning district, subject to the requirements and ordinance. Total acreage of the property in Ryan Daley residence, in more detail momentarily, is 96 acres.
Excuse me, how many acres?
96.
96 acres?
96.
Okay, so it's not five acres, it's 96 acres.
Correct, and Ryan, you've clarified.
I know, and they were just about five acres.
The five that make two was the scope of the ESDG permit.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay. So Ryan, to clarify that. There are actually a very limited number of industrial districts in the entire township. And actually, this is probably the most isolated one of those limited areas. The purpose is provide compression for the Apollo and the Fludis flow path and possibly some additional well paths in the future. It's, Heracles is not part of this. The original application was three compressors. Since then, due to some engineering that one or the other Olympus Hyperion representatives discussed, it's been downsized to two because of engineering and the engineering reasons which don't explain. Speakers tonight, Ryan Daley, he's done pretty well. Will be from CDC, will run through the basic site logistics, including a lot of things, setbacks. Then we'll have Brody Conlon, who's a parent on my car left. He's the engineering supervisor for Hyperion, and he's going to talk in more, much more detail about the compressor station itself and its safety, the path of use. This is a type use for you, going through several well paths in the future, so he recognizes that they're used for you. We also have a tape that was involved from the personal control here, to speak briefly about the sound impact assessment. You'll see that the projected sample levels here are significantly low, okay? We also have a couple of other representatives here, so basically you've probably seen the paths in the face for any of the questions that come up. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan. Yeah, I think he's getting the light here.
All right, as Blaine mentioned, my name is Ryan Daley, project manager with Civil and Environment Consultants. The plan I have off in front of you right now is an aerial overview, so I can familiarize you with the site location. So the right-hand side of the page is the Yoc River. This is the bridge from Sudersville, comes up around Douglas Run Road. The intersection with Roundhill Road is down here, and that heads up to the west. Nichols Hill Road comes off of this intersection and heads up towards their existing Apollo well pad, which is just off the page up here. So as Blaine mentioned, the compressor station is located within the industrial zoning district, which property itself is actually split between the R1 and industrial zone. And that follows this green line, we're tracing the laser right now. So all this road frontage along Douglas Run Road is located in the industrial zone. The property itself is 96 acres total, and it's kind of an irregular shape, but covers most of the area behind the compressor station. And then comes close to, to the roads. It does have a very small road frontage on Roundhill Road. However, based on the width of that, there's not enough space to actually access the site from Roundhill Road. So we do have access proposed from Douglas Run Road, and then the compressor station itself will sit near Douglas Run as well. Existing uses of the property, as you can see from the aerial, is mostly forested right now. There are some existing utility line right of ways. So there's overhead electric transmission that cuts across the property. And then Hyperion's existing Apollo B and DTI pipeline comes down across Nichols Hill Road and then actually comes through this property, across Douglas Run Road, up the hill, and then heads down to their existing Skillet Hill meter site. Setbacks, as written in the oil and gas ordinance, require a 200-foot property line setback for compressor stations, which the compressor station pad is located more than 200 feet from this southwestern property line. And then Hyperion or Olympus got a setback waiver from the property owner across the street, so they could be located within 200 feet of that front property line. Additionally, there's a 750-foot protective structure setback, which is shown on this map by the purple circle that goes around the site. There are no protective structures within that area. We conservatively measured that from the edge of the proposed pad. Then lastly, there is a 100-foot front yard setback to principal structure. So as you'll see on some of Rhodey's exhibits here in a little bit, the proposed compressor station building is located outside that 100-foot setback. So just running through some distances to the nearest protective structures, the closest one is actually to the north along Douglas Run Road. It's approximately 920 feet from the edge of the pad, circling around to the northeast. Some of these residences up on top of the hill here, they're over 1,000 feet, close to 1,100 feet from the pad. As we continue around to the south, heading down Douglas Run Road, we're over 1,900 feet in that direction. A few of the houses to the southwest on Roundhill Road, those are approximately 1,360 feet away. And then heading up to the northwest, as I mentioned, all this area behind the pad is existing, forested and undeveloped. So we're over 2,700 feet to the northwest till we get to the nearest structure.
Ryan, you may have mentioned this, but what was the previous use of the property?
So if you're familiar with this area, the previous use was associated with the coal mining operations that occurred back at the early 1900s. So there used to be a rail yard that ran through this property where they would process and load the rail cars with the coal. All right, so this next plan is a little closer view of the site. I'm showing you what the proposed grading looks like. Brody will walk you through more detail on the facilities that will be on the pad. So as I mentioned, access will be directly from Douglas Run Road. If you're familiar with where the existing pipeline crosses the road, it's going to be directly adjacent to the existing right of way. The first 50 feet of that will be paved asphalt, and then the remainder into the site will be gravel. The pad itself will be gravel cover. It's approximately 135 feet wide by 510 feet long. As far as stormwater design goes on this site, because of how tight this is with the road right of way and existing utilities, we have proposed an underground detention system to capture stormwater runoff from the pad. That will discharge into vegetated swale that will run around the pad, then discharge into this flat vegetated area off to the north side of the pad. Total disturbance, as Blaine mentioned, is approximately five acres. That's shown by this heavy black line around the perimeter of the site. We do have an erosion incentive control permit under review with DEP at the moment, so they're still reviewing that. And lastly, as far as security goes on the site, there will be a chain link fence the entire way around the perimeter of the pad with locked gates at the entrance. First responders will be given access to those gates.
Ryan, you've.
Well, the previous map, you pointed out the, the narrow point where it was touched down the property on Roundhill Road. Is it feasible to have the access from this, the site by having Roundhill Road for a number of reasons?
No, there's a couple of reasons there. One, if you can tell on this exhibit, the existing contours shown behind the site here are very steep. And so in order to get from Roundhill Road over to this location, the topography itself is too steep to construct an access road. And as we mentioned, the road frontage along Roundhill Road is not wide enough to construct an access road or meet the required 50-foot access road setback for the oil and gas ordinance. All right, real quick, just to touch on haul routes that will be used during construction and as they have to haul any cruise water offsite. All state roads propose to access the site, so from Interstate 70 up Route 51 to State Route 136, from 136, they get right on State Route 2017, which turns into Douglas Run Road and takes them directly to the site. So again, no township roads will be used along their haul route. And finally, Brody can touch more on this, but really the majority of the traffic is going to be during construction. Once the site is built, it's very, very minimal traffic. So I have a few photos here to show you what the site looks like presently and orient yourself with some of the stuff I discussed earlier. So this image is taken with a drone that is sitting above the site, right about where the southern edge of the pad, where the access road is going to come onto the pad. So facing north, you can see the existing gas line right of way that parallels the road, obviously Douglas Run Road here. The pad itself is going to sit kind of in this area that I'm highlighting with the laser. If you look off to the distance, the nearest protective structure we mentioned over 900 feet away actually sits behind this existing clump of trees, but those trees would remain. This is the same angle, just a little bit lower, just to give you an idea how the topography slopes up on the opposite side of Douglas Run Road, as well as slopes up the hill behind where the compressor station will sit. This image is looking back in the opposite direction, so this is beyond where the north edge of the pad will be. The edge of the pad will fall somewhere about this area here where this big tree is located, and that'll go back into the photo. Again, as you can see, there's trees to the south of the site beyond where the proposed disturbances that those trees would remain as well. This image here is a little bit higher looking down at the site. Again, you can see their existing pipeline right of way that comes across. So access to the site will be down in the lower left corner of the image here, and then the pad will sit really nicely here in the center of the frame. Last thing I just wanted to mention real quick, we did receive review letters from the engineer for both the conditional use and land development applications. There were no comments on the conditional use application. Two comments on the land development application that we've responded to. One was just to add the front yard setback line to some of the drawings, which we did, we resubmitted those. And then the second one, just to provide an updated certificate of insurance before the current one expires in September. So Olympus is working on getting that from their suppliers, that won't be an issue to extend that certificate of insurance. And I guess with that, you know, I'm going to turn it over to Brody next to walk you through more of the details of the site. Before we do that, do you have any questions on any of the items that I presented so far?
Yeah, the insurance, the township get a copy of that as well?
Yes, and they have a, they have a copy for their existing projects that are there in the area.
It said also that add the township one as well with liability and such.
Yeah, I think they're already on there. I think the issue was.
First one comments at the end.
Like, is it, what are the issues going to be on that?
Yeah, and so their, their kind of annual cycle expires in September, so the only issue is that do certificate before the expiration.
I think it's the date.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have HOP?
We will need an HOP from PennDOT. We have not applied for that yet.
What's the reasoning for only paving a portion of that, the first portion? I'm just curious, why do the rest can grow? Cost savings or?
Cost saving. PennDOT requires the first 50 feet for.
I'm just thinking like if you have truck traffic going up in there, just the dirt, it might be, you might, I don't know if you put a lot in there or not, but it might be something.
Yeah, again, I mean, really, once the site's constructed, you know, truck traffic is going to be really minimal coming in and out of the site.
How much, uh, be, like, say, monthly?
Brody's going to address.
Yeah, so Brody will address the specifics on the numbers there.
The only other question I have is that's an existing underground gas pipeline, correct?
Correct.
They have a certain right of way, so you're going to be beyond that right of way, correct?
Well, so it's actually Hyperion's gas line, so that they owe the right of way there. So the pad is actually going to come right up to the edge of the gas line, correct?
Because I know there's usually a million in that, they have a certain amount, it's anywhere from 10 to 20 feet.
Correct, and I didn't mention this, but there's also a sanitary line that's actually between the gas line and the road right of way. And so all our project activities are outside of the sanitary right of way.
I believe you have that on.
Yeah, it's shown on the plan, just now.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Why are you keeping a stormwater discharge in that area?
Well, so there's, let me go back to the. So there, there's actually two discharges. There's one discharge, basically capturing undetained offsite runoff that's going to come down under a culvert, and then we're going to pipe it into an existing inlet in culvert that comes under Douglas Run Road. The rest of this, the site actually naturally drains down and drains through their right of way down to a stream near, I think there's a little bridge right before you get to the houses down there. So this area of the, the project would drain down the right of way towards that stream.
Breaks long down there, worth adding more water.
All right. So, so technically, we wouldn't be adding any additional water because we would be.
I know you're saying.
Right.
Even orphesins in your, so it's.
Right.
So there's no adding impervious around in that area?
Correct, we are adding impervious area. The one thing I didn't mention, we do have a lot of water quality PMPs associated with this lake. So we do have what they call a jellyfish filler proposed, which is on the outlet of the stormwater system, so that'll, that'll provide filtration for all the stormwater runoff. And then additionally, the, the vegetated swales we have proposed will provide additional attenuation, and it would promote infiltration for the smaller storm events.
Has any water testing been done for the acid?
Uh, no, we've not tested this site for AMD. We, you know, we do have a acid producing rock management plan included with our EMS perm application. So DEP will be reviewing that, and that'll control how they manage the material on the site during construction.
Are they, if it's limestone coated or is it something else?
It, it would be mostly additional lime and limestone during construction.
With nothing for perm?
No, I mean, the, the proposed. No, I mean, the proposed, I guess the geotag report that's included proposes that we cap the pad, so any of that material that they use on-site that would have higher concentration or potential for higher concentrations of acid runoff will be treated during construction, placed towards the bottom of the fill material, and then a cap will be placed using like a clay liner coat.
Are you talking about carbonation material?
Correct, yeah.
Is that why you're rating sites that might be more caped?
Not necessarily. We, you know, we did it basically to balance it, so we don't have haul off from the site. That's basically how we got to...
So if you have a 10-foot cap, there's a couple there, where do we get that?
Well, so we only have a two-foot cap layer proposed with impervious clay material. What was that?
What are you doing about your foundations and carbonation material?
So I think, and Brody may be able to speak to this a little more as far as the type of foundation, but as far as the building goes, the proposal would be to cap below the foundations on that building, at least around the outside of the building. Obviously, inside the building, we're not going to have runoff inside the building.
Well, there's two things that are runoff, and then there's heat.
So are you talking about carbonation material that expands?
Yeah.
So again, I think based on the geotechnical recommendations, we're not expecting that to be an issue here. Because a lot of this material is what they consider, you know, mine spoil or it's been previously disturbed. Correct, so it's not, it's not like we're going to be exposing, you know, intact carbonation for our...
Is there any way to take it stormwater or across the road?
Directly across the road. Obviously, that would require an H R P from PennDOT, and we'd have to work with PennDOT, but that might require sign-off from the township or... Well, right, but when it comes to stormwater, PennDOT usually requires that the township be the applicant on those applications to ensure that the maintenance of the facilities continues. So with a private utility line like that, the owner of the utility can be the applicant. Not as far as H R P applications are concerned. At least in my experience, they've required the township to be the applicant.
I have a question.
Yep.
In regards to the route taken to the site during construction, what made you choose that route? Just because it's the shortest distance? Because I have a little bit of concern, which again, just with the residents, that section coming off of Douglas Run where then it makes a turn into Victory, Villalode Victory, it is very narrow there, and a lot of the houses are double hole minor houses. A lot of them are very close to the road, so there's really not a lot of room if trucks are passing one another or... I'm just curious, that section to me seems like a hard section to be bringing large equipment through.
Right, so I believe Olympus has utilized this route in the past to either for construction of the pipeline or associated with their well pads. Again, as I mentioned, the majority of the traffic, as far as heavy trucks go, is going to be during construction, so a lot of that's going to be bringing equipment into the site, you know, uploading that equipment, and then coming back out empty.
Any projection on that time frame?
Brody, what's your schedule?
Anyone else? Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Brody Conklin, engineering supervisor for Olympus Hacker. So I'm going to walk you through a little bit of the engineering technical background for the proposed facility. So what you're seeing here is our conceptual exhibit drawing, and this is a, this represents the basic layout of the site as we're, as we have it planned. So it shows things like our pipeline interface, our water handling, our produce fluid storage, our compression, and that sort of thing. And it's used as our, like, general guideline to assist us in laying out the site as it matures through the design process. So from a construction schedule standpoint, we're proposing, we're proposing an early 2023 construction start, so that will be civil construction and last for the first quarter of '23. And then we're planning for mechanical facility construction in second and third quarter of 2023 with an intercourse in the fourth quarter. Would be a tentative schedule for construction of the proposed facilities. As Ryan mentioned, we did submit for the D E P permits in May, and we're preparing within the next month or so to submit the appropriate air permits for Allagay County as well to support that schedule. So I'll take a quick walk through the facilities. So to the, to the east, and sorry, I'll note, you know, our plant directions here, our north, our north kind of runs at a 45-degree angle this way through the pad, so this would be the coordinate system up as north, west, and south and east based on the page layout. So to the, to the east, we have our receiver area, now this is really our interface to the pipelines. So this is our, this is our, really our interface to the pipelines. These are our launchers and receivers, and this will interface us with the, with the existing 12-inch pipeline running through that area. We also have some water handling, so some separation, filtration, and dehydration, and so that is, that serves to remove all of the free and vaporous water from the gas stream, and we have to do that to get it down to the transmission spec that we're delivering into, which, which as you guys probably know, is the miniaturized gas. Additionally, we have some produce fluid storage, so this is where we hold the water that we remove from the gas stream. We obviously have our compressors, and they are enclosed, and there are two compressors shown. The compressors and the compressor engines are fully enclosed in a pre-engineered metal building, and I'll get to that here in a few moments. So, and those allow the wells to continue to produce as those formations tend to decline, and then allow us to continue to produce into the eastern gas delivery pressures that we have to get into to meet, to put the gas in their line. We also have some additional, some additional ancillary equipment here, these are your instrument air skids, backup generators, we have like an N C C building, another small pre-engineered building that holds all of our electrical equipment as well. So again, just general site layout, and I'll continue to walk through some of the more technical items of the facility. So what you're looking at, this is a proposed, a proposed building elevation, so this is the south wall, and these would be based on the coordinate systems in the last drawing, so this will be down toward, this will be the wall facing Douglas Run. We also have the west and east walls that you can see as well. So like I said, we have about 107-foot-long building roughly, and that's going to be covered in, that's going to be covered in like standard metal art panels in a color to kind of match the surroundings. And then we'll have some garage doors and man doors located throughout the facility, or throughout the building for access, and then some power ventilation equipment. You can see some intake hoods on the walls, and then exhaust hoods on the roof, and so those serve to power ventilate the building to both maintain building temperature and our like minimum number of air changes per hour. And those, all of those, all of those building features are equipped with like noise mitigation measures, so for example, the doors are all insulated and the intake hoods, you can see the silencer section right on here that's also a part of those, so we don't have any excess noise mitigation, or noise emissions. You know, sticking out from either end of the building, we have our gas process coolers, so as we compress the gas, it heats up, and these serve to cool it back down to delivery temperatures after we compress it. And then we have the large engine exhaust silencers typically mounted on top of those to get that exhaust up and out away from the building. So you can see we have some rough, some rough measurements for the height as well, so we'd be looking at, you know, to the top of the exhaust hood, about 42 feet, and then to the top of the exhaust stack, about 49 feet, so, and then about a 60, 60 to 62-foot wide building roughly. So there's, the building will also be equipped with interior and exterior lighting, so anything on the exterior for both the building and the site in general will be dark sky and black lighting, so that we don't throw any, throw any excess lighting off the facility footprint. So I think that's the last slide. So, you know, you guys mentioned traffic, so as Ryan and Blake mentioned, the majority of the traffic is going to be during the construction period, so that four to six-month period in the second and third quarter of '23, and we would expect to see about 20 to 30 light trucks per day during construction, and roughly 10 or less like semi-type large trucks per day, that would be a maximum during delivery periods, during heavy delivery periods.
Brody, when you say light truck, talk about pickup truck.
Yes, yes, personal vehicles of like the construction crew that would be building the facility. So not necessarily trucks, light vehicles, I guess 20 to 30 would be per day. And then, once we would get into the operational phase, we would expect one to two light pickups or, you know, personal vehicles per day as the facility is designed to be unmanned. And then roughly once a week, we would have, you know, two to three water trucks to remove, remove the produced water that we remove from the gas, the gas stream and haul that off. So from a, as the previous folks mentioned, the vast majority of the, of the traffic will be during the construction phase, and it will be heavily dominated by small light vehicles as opposed to large, you know, large traffic or large loads, except at, you know, certain small intervals.
So do you anticipate there's going to be any situations where there's a lot of, that there are large construction vehicles trying to pass even in the opposite direction at the same turn?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that. Generally, we could schedule that around construction and definitely not during the operational phase.
Some of these quarters that you mentioned will still encompass the school year. What time of day will you start running these trucks? Because again, surely you've taken that route. There is a section that I have concerns about kids standing at bus stops and these trucks falling around, I just...
I think it's a safe assumption that we would follow all the existing school bus blackout times currently imposed on Olympus' well pad operations.
Especially since you mentioned those roads are so extremely narrow.
Yeah, because they're very narrow, and one side is creep line and the other side is, there are truly houses right up against the street, so... And it is only a small section, but it's still part of the route.
Yes, we're required, we use S for empty. Okay, so moving on, I'll talk about automation real quick. As I mentioned, the site is designed to operate autonomously, so there is no operator stationed at the site 24 hours a day, seven days a week, or anything like that. It's, it's really all controlled by an advanced suite of automation devices that, devices that go back to some PLCs, and we monitor hundreds of points across the station, like temperatures, pressures, we monitor the atmosphere to ensure that we don't have a hazardous situation or, or any, even any off nominal situations arising. And we can adjust those controls on the fly via the, via the computer accordingly. All those feed back into our, our data system, which is our supervisor control system, so we would get automatic alarming and notification any time that one of those hundreds of parameters may be exceeded on a high or a low level event or a high pressure and that sort of thing. So we can also alarm those items based on texts, emails, automated phone calls as the situation arises, which is something we have to lend to all our own systems. Another note, the station is designed to put itself in a failure-proof state in the event any hazardous, hazardous situation occurs. So for example, it blocks, it blocks the facility in and makes sure the gas is in a safe location in the event it would detect a hazardous, a hazardous situation or any sort of alarm event if necessary. And then, and then that's all part of the automatic emergency shutdown system. And as part of that emergency shutdown system, we monitor things like pressures, as I said, L E L concentration and atmosphere, and so, and additionally, we can do things like, we have manual push-button operators located around the site that if someone were on the site and a, had a situation were developed, they could press those buttons and automatically trigger that E S D system. Also, we would have, the building on the interior and exterior would be equipped with warning lights capable of signaling anyone approaching the facility, whether there was a, whether that E S D system had been tripped. So you would be able to view that prior to entering the site and see that, that E S D system might be active or tripped or something of that nature.
Quick, you were saying the sensors on the inside building, will there be sensors on the outside to detect any kind of leakage?
So generally, we have our main, our main priority, we look at the concentration of combustible gases on the inside of the building. From a safety perspective, we also have flame detection, so like a bright light, like the bright light of a fire would tend to set, would set those off and trigger that E S D system. We will also have various atmospheric monitoring located around the site as well for leak detection as well, so...
Yes, yeah, I was asking, that's the same question. Like, what exactly do you have in terms of air quality testing and noise testing, you know, on a constant level? Because I think that's one of the concerns we heard, is, you know, what's coming out of there and also the noise, so what do you have on site?
Sure, so, so from an air quality perspective, we're obviously running all that stuff through A C H D, and we would be required to do all the periodic...
Brody backed up on an acronym, this is always A C H D.
Allagay County Health Department. So, all right, so we would, A, comply with all of the construction and operating requirements, and generally, we go a little bit beyond some of those requirements.
Yeah, my interest though is if you're doing air quality testing, is that something that you can supply to the township? Are you doing constant monitor? Let me know if it's complicated, I know you have permitting requirements in terms of accounting and health department. My question is, are you doing monitor there that could be given to the township or supplied to show 24-hour testing that, hey, we monitor this, this, we know we're complying with these limits? Is that something that you do, or is it not something you do?
So online monitoring is not a requirement of the D E P or Allagay County.
Right.
It is generally a more periodic testing to confirm that you're operating at the parameters you say you're, you say you're operating at.
Yes, that's why...
Generally, I believe that is quarterly, and there are some additional tests that are run annually as well to make sure that you're operating within your permit. Beyond that, as I mentioned, we would have L E L monitors situated in the building and at a few, at a few locations around the site, and those would detect specifically a leak of methane, and that, that would also shut the facility down.
Okay, I was going to say, are they similar to the ones that here we have on the pads, the asphalt pads now, kind of have these monitors around?
He's talking about five decimaria.
Yes.
Pretty much the same thing, okay.
Yes, generally, generally, those would be the same devices.
What about the noise? Do you have somebody monitor?
So we... So we wouldn't do online monitoring unless there was an additional need to. And I, I'm going to detail through some of the noise, some of the noise mitigation here in a few minutes. And then Paige can, Paige can talk some of the specifics with noise. But generally, we would not do online noise, noise measurement unless, unless a, a situation arose where we needed to confirm that we were operating where we say we're operating, or where we say we're going to operate at.
Or there's something wrong, say I drive by and I can hear it really loud.
Yes.
Contact the township and then they can contact you or vice versa, say, hey, your settings are wrong. You can hear this on the road, we should be.
Yes, that's correct. So, and we definitely have measures in place to develop, to deploy those monitors at, at the need arises. So, real quick, before I touch on noise, I mentioned lighting. Obviously, we'll have, you know, the compressor building, interior and exterior will be, will be equipped with lighting. We'll have some yard lights stationed at, you know, various areas to just illuminate the areas around the gas equipment throughout the facility. As I mentioned, you know, lighting will be dark sky compliant. So that's what we do to try and avoid throwing light up, throwing light behind us and getting glare down onto the road. So we really want to keep all that light onto the site. I believe it's also part of the ordinance that lighting is not just left on. So we obviously understand that part as well. So, and we'll be able to, you know, turn those lights on and off remotely if required, so. We already talked a little bit about air. Obviously, I mentioned Alliant County Health Department. Compressors will be equipped with oxidation catalysts, kind of per the, per the guidelines and requirements there. And load knock settings for those engines. You know, the, the de, the de-hive will be equipped with a high temperature combustor to ensure we're, you know, we're breaking all those de-hive vapors into, you know, their base water, water emissions and that sort of stuff. And, and like we talked about a little bit, the continuous, continuous monitoring for gas, for leak detection already. So, so from a, from a noise mitigation perspective, we do have a lot of things that are already built into our, what I'll call our standard design. And, and those are kind of, you know, prevalent throughout the building and the site design. One of the big things is obviously the compressor building. So, you know, this is a free interior metal building. It's a, it's stuffed with both noise mitigation and thermal insulation. It's got about eight to ten inch thick walls. And so in those eight to ten inch thick walls, we have four to six inches of a high density mineral wool. And that is a, that is, serves to attenuate and absorb a lot of the noise generated by the compressors and the compressor engines. Additionally, we'll have four to six, four inches of fiberglass insulation. That's primarily for thermal control, but it also aids in the reduction of noise as well going out of there. We'll, we'll layer the inside of the building with acoustic panels as well to, to make sure that we, make sure that we direct all that noise into the, into the rock wool insulation. Like I mentioned, all of the holes in the building will be filled with a silencer. So as you can see, as I pointed out before, the intake fans, the exhaust fans will have a big silencer on them. And they're also stuffed with mineral wool to, to ensure that we don't have any noise emissions through those, those holes we put in the buildings as well. And then, of course, the, the man doors and garage doors will also be insulated as well. Make sure those aren't noise emission points. So, you know, the, the major, the major equipment on the outside of the building, we have our gas process coolers, which are essentially a large fan and a large fan heat exchangers. So we do a couple of things with those as well. So we, we spec and purchase what are called minimum acoustic geometry or MAG fans. And they're generally the lowest noise fan that you can purchase. And we also do a couple of things, you know, we limit our maximum fan tips deep to ten thousand feet per minute because that's about where you start having trouble with, with noise emissions from the fans. And we also speed control those fans with a variable frequency drive. And that ensures that during the cooler times of the year, we're really running those fans as slow as we possibly can to control the gas temperature and make sure we're, we're really using those fans as minimum as necessary. So multiple measures also built into those. And you can also see, as I mentioned, the exhaust silencers on the, on top of the coolers. So those are what's called an extreme grade silencer. It's generally the best silencer you can purchase for this type of engine. And it offers probably forty-five to sixty decibels of attenuation on that engine noise prior to, prior to getting out. So finally, from a, from a, from a noise standpoint, the site will have a, be equipped with a vent silencer. So we don't want to, every time we, you know, vent gas or something to that nature, we don't want to alert that, you know, we don't want to alarm the residents. So we'll direct all that through another mineral wool pack silencer that will help keep, keep our normal day-to-day operations quiet as well.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this, maybe this is stupid, but like the south elevation is looking from Douglas Run, right? This is me standing on Douglas Run, looking at the facility, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So on the left and the right is where you have your fans.
Yes.
In the back is a hillside that goes straight up.
Yes.
Why would you not shift those fans to the back up against the hillside to even further, you know, dilute the sound? Because it seems to me the fans are gonna, the noise is gonna come this way, huh?
Yeah, and so the, the building blocks a lot of the noise to the back. And those are primarily for access, I guess, crossing each other, the, going, I guess, towards the building. So it keeps the south fan from going north and the north fan from going south. Those are primarily oriented like that for access, for, for like maintenance access. Because getting up to the back of the site really would hamper the access to those, those pieces of equipment in the event needed to maintain them.
I mean, you're already, because you're, you're digging out the back of the hillside to put the facility in itself.
Yes.
So what's preventing you from going back another thirty feet and putting those in behind the building? I'm just.
I would probably turn the building out of the way because those are in line with the rest of the cells.
Yes, yeah, the, the entire building would have to rotate. And from a, from a civil expansion perspective, that's probably a good question for Ryan.
Yeah, back up to the three oh one, apparently. So one thing I, there you go. So one thing I didn't mention when going over the site design, the, because of the existing topography, the steep hill coming down here, we already have two retaining walls proposed along the back of the site. If we were to expand this pad further back to allow space to situate the, the exhaust fans or the cooling fans behind the building, those, those retaining walls will need to get significantly larger just because of how steep the topography is behind the site.
Yeah. I, I mean, that doesn't bother me, I'm saying it's, it's sound. I mean, again, I, I don't do what you guys did. I'm saying from a common sense perspective, would putting them behind the building be quieter than having them on the sides? Basic yes, no, yes, no.
No.
Okay. It's gonna be the same, same sound on the sides of the building as it's behind the building?
Yes.
What wall are you putting up?
What's that?
What kind of wall are you putting up?
So we have the facility designed such that it does not need a wall to comply with. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, retaining wall. Regardless, last note on noise, we have the facility designed such that it does not need a, a sound wall to meet the requirements of the township as well.
Better than more than sixty decibels?
Correct.
We're gonna have to, Paige Rosendahl is gonna address precisely that issue momentarily.
Just a note on the, the retaining walls at the back of the site, those will be the ready rock walls. So you can think of those as like big concrete legos essentially, this, this interlocked together and they stack them up to the wall.
Which are grid legs?
What was that?
Grid legs.
Behind the wall? Honestly, I, I don't even believe there are grids in, in this one. Uh, it's just rock, you're estimating rock face in this. I mean, that, that detail is included in the geotech report, I don't know offhand right now. Any more questions?
Well, I don't know whether it would be you or you that answered this, but you mentioned the water. Is the water that's coming from the gas that you're gonna be?
Yes.
Or is this water being pumped into?
No, there's, there's no water pumped into the facility. The water arrives with the gas stream and that's, and we're removing it, yes.
Does that also have the sand in it as well?
No, generally the sand is, is removed up here above that.
Okay, so that's, that's a, that's a, okay. And you said it's gonna be approximately like a couple trucks a week?
Yes, we, we would expect a few, yeah, probably.
And what route would they be taking to come in and remove, or they'd use the same route?
They, they would use the hall route and, and any restrictions.
But I think that was it.
Those fans, now I've been to those facilities, like some of them blow down and some of them blow back. Which way are those blowing?
These will blow down. And we've specifically selected those for noise, for, to ensure they're the lowest noise we're hearing.
So they're blow, the fans are there blowing down. You're telling me that if I'm on Douglas Run, we'll make sure I'm clear. If they're on the sides and they're blowing down, you're telling me it's, it's not quieter than if they were behind the building blowing down? That's, I'm standing on Douglas Run, the same noise level, is that what you're saying?
Paige can talk to the particulars.
I'm just curious about that question, because you said, you said it was the same, I'm just curious about that. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a sound expert or an engineer, it just seems logical to me that if I'm, it's like me talking to you here and I go outside behind the wall and try and talk to you, like you're not going to hear me as well, it just seems like.
I would, I would say the overall impact is the same is, is kind of what I meant, I guess.
What I want to do is if you put the fans in there, let the sound then bounce off the walls and back as well? Could that happen too? To make it louder, if that's the case?
I think those are things that are all included in.
Why don't we bring up Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
If you go.
Yeah.
What's fuel lines?
Uh, natural gas.
Kathy, I know, I, we talk about this all the time. You guys are bringing up a lot of good points. Can you bring these microphones up closer so we can hear you, please? Thank you.
It's not like anyone.
I, I'm sorry. You guys are bringing up a lot of good points and need to be heard by public and we can't hear you out here. I know you can hear each other up there, but that's why we're doing this, we're supposed to be public. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tej, T-H-E, Rosendahl, R-O-S-E-N-D-A-H-L. I'm a regional manager for Acoustical Control. I've been with the company since two thousand and eleven. I oversee all of our operations in the northeast and mostly things east of the Mississippi and in Canada. Some of the things that we do, we provide noise mitigation services, we build acoustical buildings, temporary permanent acoustical barriers, we also do a variety of noise vibration monitoring. And in this case, sound impact assessments, which is computer generated impact modeling. So, Hydrion contracted us to basically formulate what the impact to the surrounding areas would look like if they placed this station in the location it is. So the things that we do, we take into account the compressor size, RPMs, horsepower, frequencies to create sound power levels. And then we take the height of those, the location of those, and we drop them into the computer software. And that propagates across the area, whatever that area is. In this case, in the area of north of Douglas Run. And basically, that accounts for all of the sound propagating across. And it is accounting for the top graph, topography, elevation. So that all of those things kind of are, are accounted for as it travels across the area. We do not account for vegetation because we don't know typically the type of year. We could actually install it for this because it's a permanent installation. But as we know, leaves fall and the fall, winter, there's no. So we just use no vegetation as it's the most conservative kind of metric. So we included, as Brody mentioned, all of the, the inputs were fans, exhaust fans, intake fans, the silencer data, the exhaust, the sensor data for that. All of that is included in the models. So we ran the models and we modeled twenty-five receptors that you can see in the areas around the station.
Well, before you go further, what, what's the ordinance for the max?
So the ordinance is effectively sixty decibels at the predicted structure. So after we ran the meditation or the propagation maps, we predict sound levels to be between twenty-eight point four at R twenty-one, which is a little difficult to see because it's a little buzzing. And forty-two point eight decibels at R twenty-five, which is in the yellow to the northeast of the station. So that guy right there. That's the highest predicted sound levels based on noise coming from the station. And again, we are expecting that to be forty-two point eight decibels.
Twenty-four is that?
Yes.
And Tej says almost twenty decibels lower than the ordinance required, then why is that the case?
Yes, that's correct. And the reason being is the kind of low noise equipment that Hydrion is going to install on these. In regards to all of the silencers, the mitigation efforts, everything that they're doing on this is low noise.
Has Acoustical Control undertaken any measurements to be specific sound levels in this area?
We did. In October of twenty, we did an ambient test to the north of the station along Douglas Run and then also to the south at the Round Hill Road interchange. To the north, the seventy-two hour average was fifty-three point four three decibels. And to the south, it was sixty-one point eight two. And that's seventy-two hours average sound levels. Most of that is due to just significant traffic noise.
So what was the peak or what was the long?
So the max levels on the north, eighty-nine point zero four. On the south, one hundred point two seven.
What time of day was that?
The peaks?
Yeah.
I don't have that with me, I can get it.
Yeah, it would be, so.
Sure.
Those, those are, those would be like one time, that's like a truck driving by and goes up and then off, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes, it would be a big day. So the sound coming from.
What's the ambient level, do you know, like there, like at these different spots? Like what is like this standard level?
Well, so we took an ambient right around here and one right around here. The one in the north, so in here, was fifty-three point four three decibels.
Now, that's, that's not, that's an average.
That's the average, over seventy-two hours, the logarithmic average of noise. So we take all the noise, all the frequencies, and then we calculate that logarithmically and that's the number that you come out with over the seventy-two hour period that we monitor. Now, if there was a thunderstorm or the Fourth of July, those numbers would change.
Well, on a normal day from eight AM to night of eight AM in the north?
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna be pretty close to what you're gonna see. I'm not sure exactly the days that they're out there, but it was October seventeenth through the nineteenth. I don't know what day is there for.
Wait, what was it?
October seventeenth through the nineteenth. So it would have been late enough in the year that insect noise would have been minimal. Buddy?
Paige, I know you included this in the sound impact assessment, but you always include a chart that kind of compares to, you know, at various decimal levels, what, what, what the source is.
Something comparable, sure. The comparable sound levels that we're predicting are going to be basically a quiet whisper to a quiet home. You know, like on, on the high end, we're predicting forty-two decibels at R twenty-five. So, you know, just kind of, that's probably louder than forty-two. The fan that's running right now. So, I mean, just kind of to give you some kind of, you know, an idea of what kind of, how low these noise levels are going to be. Inside the structure, they're likely not going to hear any of it. But, long and short of it, uh, all their, the predicted sound levels are well in compliance. Thank you.
So that's, that's all we have.
Okay, just, maybe you said this at the beginning, I'm not sure, but your reason for having this building is just to let everybody know?
Uh, allows, uh, the Apollo Flutus pads to continue production.
What's, what does that mean, so that people don't, don't know what that means? Why do you actually need this?
So, so as the, um, as the wells age, the reservoir pressure declines, um, and in order to allow those wells to continue to produce, we installed a compression, and the compression lowers the pressure seen at the well, at the well's pads and at the well heads. And that allows those wells to continue to produce, uh, against the discharge pressure, which is, um, determined by the system we are delivering into, which is eastern gas, so we can't change that discharge pressure. So we have to, we decrease the suction pressure, uh, on the, using the compressor station to allow the wells, the Apollo Flutus wells to continue to produce.
Basically, lay those first in order to get the gas into the transmission.
Right, I, I just brought that up because other people in the audience may not even know why this is happening.
Sure.
And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay, Paige?
Well, so, uh, this, you've, you've gone, limited this down to two compressors at this point, I have two questions. One, um, what are they running off, what power source?
Natural gas.
Do they make them on electric?
They do.
Are the electrics quieter than the gas?
There, there is a reduction in the engine noise, but they are by no means silent, um, because there is still compressed noise.
The electricity noise is electric versus the natural gas, electric would be?
They are gener, yes, they are generally quieter.
Are they more expensive than that?
Um, it depends, sorry, that, that's not a very good answer, but it depends.
I'm aware that I use that word.
Yeah, really depends, um, every compressor package is different, um, and every compressor package.
What was the reason that you guys chose natural gas?
Uh, we did actually approach less than power to see if they can support electrifying this station, and they cannot. Uh, in a, in a reasonable time manner.
So you've limited it down to, um, would you have any possibilities of expanding in the future or are you set in two?
We are not anticipating any need for expansion beyond two at this point, so.
At this point, I'm saying, is it possible that in the future you would want to expand?
It is extremely unlikely at this site that we would physically be able to put a third unit in.
This site, this site wouldn't just, it's not just served, just so for clarification, I mean, it's not just servicing the two wells in the township. It would also service existing wells that you have, say, in neighboring municipalities as well.
Uh, it could, in the future, be utilized to service other, other pads in the, in the area, but the primarily, the primary reason is the Apollo Flutus pads.
Okay, also, you were originally agreeing, went to, just recently, actually, why was that again?
So the original, the original, um, thought for three, uh, was we actually did plan on, or not plan on, we were leaving a room for a future expansion with a third unit. Our plan has always been to install two compressors for this phase of construction, um, but as we refine our, our, our Olympus schedule, um, we, we saw that we did not need the, the additional third unit.
Is there a possibility that that will be put in as a third, um, with expansion, is that correct?
Right now, the site's not designed to facilitate that because we are confident we won't need that unit.
So you're saying this thing that you're designing won't be able to just fit, throw on another one?
That's correct, that's correct.
All right, so, you would actually have to build something?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that was gonna be my next one. Um, just real quick too, I know we went, some of us went to see some of, was that the natural gas or was that electric?
Those are natural gas, are those right?
Those are natural gas, wanted to see, okay. And that'll give you an idea of what the noise on the ground was.
And how many compressors were there quite before?
Uh, there were ten, there were ten at that location. Uh, ten that are placed the size of the units that were proposed.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, concerns, comments?
Uh, I'd want, just in general, with regards to the future plan, what are they? That when, when you come, when people come in here for a supplementing approval, you know, they need to see the overall master plan, whether it's in a phase or not phase. So, what is the master plan?
So for this, for this facility, uh, this is the master plan.
For this, I'm not talking about just this facility, I'm talking about.
Right.
Hyperion, or whatever you wanna call it.
You guys wanna? Yeah.
So, at, at this, an upcap price communications for Olympus Energy and also obviously representing, representing Hyperion. Um, in Elizabeth Township, oh, currently, the applications that have been before this planning commission, including the Champion Compressor Station and the Herick's Well Pad are what we have on our schedule. There's nothing else on the books for us currently in Elizabeth Township. So, um, what you have seen this summer, um, is potentially going to bookend our activity.
I'm sure it'll plan, hopefully, on a year, two years or something.
Yeah, we do, we, we do, we do, but, um, in terms of future well pad development, um, we anticipate being able to reach our accessible acreage with the well pads that we have currently, um, or that are currently, uh, proposed. Um, expansion would be only likely with significant acquisition from Olympus. So for what we have currently in our portfolio. Uh, like, land acquisition, yeah, so for what we currently have in our asset portfolio, we anticipate this is likely going to bookend our activity for the foreseeable future without, like I mentioned, significant acquisition.
Hey, does anybody else have any more questions, concerns, comments? What would you like to go, would you like to propose this to the commissioners next? Or do you want more discussion or another?
I'd like to see the asphalt change, just like constructability issue for design.
I did not do that.
I'd like to see the asphalt change just from the design basis, because that area down there made it so. Whether, did it actually be done or not be done, without the township's intervention. We have to be something to be looked at.
What do you wanna look at?
The asphalt for all the stormwater.
What's that, like, their stormwater management plan?
Yeah, yeah.
You guys can get, can you guys get a copy of that?
Uh, so, a copy of what?
Stormwater management plan.
Uh, they have the stormwater, I'd say that thing should be changed.
Oh, okay. So it, it's certainly something we can reach out to Pennaut about and define the, what the primary requirements would be, uh, whether the township would, would definitely need to be applicant on that, that type of installation.
I mean, assuming, and again, I don't know what they'll do, but if it's part of the process and that's the best way, if the approval is, if they're gonna do it, then that's the best way to handle the stormwater, I don't imagine that being a problem to have the township ask, yeah, I would, I would think. I mean, I would have to talk to them.
Right.
Okay, um, thank you. Once again, do we want to continue this next time or do we want to put a motion ahead and go forward to commissioners? Does everyone feel comfortable about having to go forward? No?
I'm not, I'm not against or for, uh, and maybe because this is my first year dealing with this. If somebody could speak to that traffic, um, that, that is my biggest concern, as I, I, the building, the compression, I've, I've been around them, they're not really deep, I understand that. It is more for me that trek of Roseway being as narrow as it is, being the primary.
Again, they did do that route to.
Right, right, and I understand, but that's why I'm saying I, I'm not familiar with that, so I didn't get to be exposed to that. If you feel comfortable moving forward with that.
Trust that, they real life sit, when they're wanting to stop, or they bust, shummy and jelly, so, I don't have issues.
I think you could make a specific condition, if you want to say no truck storing school hours, I think it's already in the ordinance and I think it's already.
Yeah, that's.
Not, or, um, I think most of our schools are, like, for that. And again, I, I'm not even familiarized with the bus routes in general, I'm just speaking from a parent perspective.
Sure, and I can just elaborate on what we currently do, so, um, actively, you know, at the beginning of every school year and, and before significant operations, Olympus reaches out to municipality, the school districts in which we overlap, our operations overlap with, with their, um, their school bus schedules, we reach out to them, we let them know what roads we're utilizing, um, and we ask them to confirm it, what windows their schools are, uh, busing students to and from on those specific roads. Um, that establishes what we call like a school curfew window, where we don't do heavy hauling during those hours. So we make sure that, you know, we don't have children waiting at school bus stops on those, on those roads whenever we have a hauling going on. So that's current, part of our current process, even if it's not dictated by the ordinance. I do believe that it's actually in the ordinance here and not in conditions, um, but yeah, so, so we do that collaboration, um, with the school district and its busing company, um, it, it is part of our process. So that would be a morning curfew and an afternoon curfew that would certainly apply to all of the hauling that's, you know, going on as related to this facility.
Well, is it possible that you could even do some of the really heavy hauling on the weekends, where there's just school going on?
There, there likely will be hauling on the weekends, of course, yeah, um, but it would be just, you know, as needed, the, the team can access the site with those hauls so long as it's not within those curfew windows. Um, but that's certainly part of our process, whether it would be, uh, you know, dictated by ordinance or not, we do that everywhere we operate. Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got a question from Matt. That setback way, way to the side.
Yeah.
How does that sit procedure work?
So, I mean, I, I think that if the, the neighboring property owner is going to consent to any sort of setback issue, then I don't, I don't foresee that being a problem, like.
I mean, your ordinance expresses states that.
I mean, you can get a waiver, yeah, you can get a waiver, yeah.
But does, does the property owner?
Because we dealt with that on something else today, yeah, yeah, and that property, that's a, that's a commercial problem, right?
I was gonna say, that's.
The waiver's C N X, oh. Uh, that's dissolved problem.
Yeah, it's not across the street also as well, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that, this is the waiver for the property across the street.
Yeah, it's for that, yeah.
And, 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 yeah, C N X is dissolved, we've gone back and forth in terms of entities, but they're the ones that execute.
Yeah, that's right, in the ordinance, yeah, in the ordinance itself, it says that unless you get an express waiver from them, so.
And it's just for the two hundred, no waiver was necessary for the seven fifteen, that's what it's about. In that area.
Okay, one more time, do we want to make a motion or do you wanna wait till next one and discuss this further?
I'll send it through information, I don't know if it has, like, the seat of, of this church, too.
That is well as the school.
I would, I would add, I would add two, uh, not a potential, just to limit it to two compressors, but that is specific.
Okay, that sounds good, yeah, I, I'm slow with that. Okay, I need a motion, go forward. David, second. Amy, all second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys, thank you. Um, no questions, sir, sorry, we had that earlier today. I'm sorry. Gonna take this a few minutes, but, but, yeah, we break down and then we continue. Okay, everyone, we're gonna continue on to the tax amendment, that's the next portion, uh, for our meeting. Um, basically, I have very comments about it. You really can't go in depth on it until it goes to commissioners, but if you have any comments or anything, we can do that this time. Well, um, because what I was going to recommend that we basically, I can't, yeah, deny the wording as it states and just have the commissioners go forward, but they, but they make the plan. Are we good with that? Yeah, thanks, no. Uh, are we good with that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, any emotion for that? David, second. Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it. Uh, is there anything else, is the commission one wants to? No? Any emotion for your? Amy, second. Megan?
Second, yes.
Okay, David, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're done.